Exactly what's happening. Okay, so make the agenda. Put it under this. And then also, before I had an opportunity, they were sent the bid package from the third, on the transportation part improvements. Just wanted to let you know that you received it. We probably were waiting for John B. and wait. Resolution or talk to the board of. He was pretty happy going at one day. But he was happy since that one day. So I need a motion to approve the agenda of the amendment. For favor. The votes and say motion pass. Now I need the approval agenda has no idea. Yes, second. For favor. So agenda pass. Motion to approve minutes from the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, town board meeting. Yes, second. For favor. Votes number and said, I think all motion passed. Upper rise came in a bill sixty six thousand nine hundred one thousand ninety eight cents. Need a motion to pay those. Second. For favor. Votes number and said, okay. Any comments on the agenda? No comments on the agenda. And there are presentations. So I just have one thing to say. I'm glad we're back seeing all your smiling faces. See, Mr. Ralph Walters here. We're back. We're doing well. And thanks to all the town board and all these town employees who are dealing with this great job of COVID nineteen. But I want you to be aware that you still have to be careful, especially if you have vaccines. No presentation, so move to the reports.
On the second page.
So we're having, making sure we're doing a hybrid. We're filming live and we also had people to report supervising July twenty twenty one and ten new virtual meeting of Olster County Supervisors. Went met with polls and chief talked about noise concern with chasing business. Met with John Bean and contractors to discuss the prebid information for the mental transportation park. We also met with restaurant owners to discuss the noise issue. I would say that basically that issue has gone away so far by chief.
Yes, sir.
And it seems like everybody's fighting nice down there. Attended many board meetings. I met with attorney Mike White and discussed police working comp issue. Mike is actually an attorney, attorney for Windsor. What Mike does is tries to get money back for the town. And he wants the third party insurance. So as you know, one of our police officers was rear ended. And consequently, he's been out of work for a while. Hopefully, this is what Mike does. He tries to get money, some money back from the third party insurance. No guarantees, but it was sort of chat. Attended UC transportation council meeting and canceled down. By the way, we are a COVID member as of twenty twenty one. Took that right out, it was a pleasant ride. By the way, I don't put any couches for any model which may have an issue. So let's start now. Met architect and engineer Tom Back recreation community center committee members to discuss design. I'm happy to say and to acknowledge that we received three contracts for Tom Back building and two eight hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty from the late Frank Starrett. Three hundred and seventy five thousand from Senator Stufus and a hundred and seventy five thousand from Assemblyman Jacobs. Thank you very much. Also, received a contract for fifty thousand dollars for the police park. So it's all good news. It happened pretty fast since the COVID nineteen listed some of the restrictions that the government put in. I guess like Assemblyman Jacob said, some group members. So I kept on calling to make sure that we were, we're all there and they assured me that we were all in paperwork was done. And so we did receive it. So this is good news. A chief proposed an idea with the DOT representative John Riley to discuss possible safety issues with Route nine and the farmer's market. So maybe we could address that now too, chief. If we want to get on the microphone. So we met with John, I'm with John Riley. He was saying some issues about concerns about safety of the farmer's market and myself. And she met with John. Unfortunately, John, I'm chief from the superintendent's highway superintendent. So I almost couldn't make it, but we met this morning. So chief, you want to give us the rundown about that?
Sure. So we evaluated the track patterns that were being used up there. The lower parking lot near the park entrance. Recommendation maybe some tree trimming and expanding the entrance way to that little parking lot curb cut, expanding that a little wider was suggested. The other one was to close off one of the three entrances on the south end of the park. So there's three entrances. The middle one was suggested it closes off. And then we would or could use the first entrance in the middle only with no left turn or not. And the furthest would be an exit only with right turn only, no left turn. So one would be an entrance. You wouldn't have a left turn if you're not just the entrance. And then the further so down would be an exit only. Right turn only, no left turn. There's signs that have to be done. A suggestion of an apron along the shoulder of a road to be installed, a suggestion and proper sign. That was just it. When I close the middle entrance off, do a weigh with them all together. So the suggestion is bring the top sort of covering and make it disappear all the way. This way, there's no reason, no way.
Yes, this morning I met with John Mange and discussed the DOT suggestion and what I was going through possibly. That worked very much.
I had three guys, so I dumped the top side over there. My order, you don't let your turn something.
So we're right in our own way. Very very much chief, thank you John very much.
Where, where can you turn up? Just out of the main, or correct, out of the main inch you park and moving to north or south. So if you come in the farmer's market, then you park in where they've been parked sometimes up where the U turn was. Now, how do they get out? They can only, okay, they can only go south. They can only make a righty turn to the south. So you come in there from the north, that's the north side of the freeway. Come from the north side, take a right enter and then go out and the smoke, smoke the most exit. Take a left turn. Correct. Right in my, right in my back. Or you use the regular park entrance, park in the lower, the most northern park. And which is the best. When I go there, most people located or are there or the, the roadways in the park. And they made a suggestion, so a bunch of years back with Mr. Rapper, with Chief Piper, cut the curb there, made a little rock ramp or either tour ramp. This one of the suggestions was to make that wider because there's kind of a big tree sort of in the way now. It wasn't big back then, but it is now. Was set over the tree, but another X amount of feet of that curb and extend that ramp to make the, so that it's easier for people to come in and out of that little grass parking lot onto the main exit entrance of the park. Because right now it's about as wide as a car may be wide. So that was a suggestion made whether you all decided to go that route or not.
You guys are a great idea. Sorry, John, I didn't turn that enough up. Because I'm actually the one that brought up the idea because when I was at the farm market and it was going down, car had to wait to come back in, so we get there.
That was basically years ago to continue that program. We were probably told that curb was, because it was a curb. So we also, we could, we could take another sixty nine.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chief. Thank you, John. I met with John Milburn. He's the Olster County Deputy Executive. Showed him what we're doing down at the land. Showed him the sound period, very impressed. The researcher needed to show him that to see if I could get some support from Olster County. See, they have a whole bunch of money up there. There was a shot. So he was impressed and we'll see what happens. Met with Margaux School District Michael to review the equipment. I think we're pretty good. We're hybrid. And met twice with the community event committee for the event on September twenty fifth directly to twenty sixth. It's called the Margaux Community Pride Day. Chief Scott, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, Steve Jensen from the Lions Club has contacted myself about. And he wanted to see, first he wanted to see what the police department were doing, who actually usually is funded community day for us every year. We haven't had it. And coming out of COVID, we thought it would be a great idea to have a little bigger art community in it. And so we got it made together, I'm myself, chief, John, fire chiefs, fire departments, cop in the county. And even we're getting a lot of people involved within the community that are stepping up and donating the money, donating the food. And we're going to be a lot of celebration time. So basically the idea is we're going to have it at the park on the twenty fifth. Probably start at one, food probably start at two. We hammer hot dogs served for free to the community drinks. Through the day, there's going to be events from the gaps to house. We're going to get farm drives, we're going to get farm rides, fly. Jerry's getting the people to come down and do what they do from the state and county, right?
Yes.
And fire departments, looking maybe possibly getting the smoke out from what they usually get. John's going to bring these guys and equipment. Going to be a lot of events going on during the day. At the end of the day, they're going to talk about only fireworks. County tech's going to come down. He's going to thank the people because mainly this is to say thank you to a lot of the people that cooked the food and brought the food to the people there in the project resilience, right? And we really want to showcase them a little to say thank you. That's what the community is about. I think like as a community, we did a great job for our citizens. And so he's going to come down and say a few words. And again, then we'll have some fireworks. Could be an old day today.
So it's, it's a, it's in progress. And so we'll find out exactly what, where we stand as far as the budget is concerned. Right now, we, you know, it's up in the air. We have some on which fireworks is going to be, some like this, other things. But basically, hopefully at the next meeting, maybe we'll have Steve Jensen from the Lions Club coming to do a presentation to be more specific than exactly what's going to occur. So thank you for everybody stepping up. Like Scott said, this is community pride day. Pride for all the people that stepped up. Everybody stepped up in the morning. There's so many people that we don't even know. During the meeting, John Mange, the highway superintendent, brought up a couple of things that we forgot, we forgot about, you know. There's a department that got some donations to buy food for the hospital workers and stuff like that. So it's, it's something that is in progress. And it's a thing of love for our community. So it's a great thing. And lastly, I guess then we already talked about. I met with John this morning, talked about the DOT recommendation. As you're seeing, he's already got a top sort of on that middle drive.
Thank you very much. I just want to report, Mr. Corbett.
Building Department report, month end, June twenty twenty one. Certificate of occupancy for requested information nineteen building extensions, eight fire inspections, three fire faults, one TPA application, one ordered agreement, sixteen complaints, thirty one. Building permits, addition renovations, five barns, one virgin permits, twenty two. Carports, garages, one tech stairs, seven demolitions, one electrical, five generators, one. Cool, seven roofs, seven shed, six single family homes, five solar panels, five. Tank installation removals, four wire communication services, one. Total permits, seventy eight estimated cost of building, two billion four hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred ninety nine dollars. Monthly revenues, certificate of occupancy, six hundred permit extension, sixteen thirty three fifty. Building permits, fourteen thousand one ninety two thirty. Requested information, nineteen hundred. Fire inspection, three twenty per permit, ninety. DVA applications, three hundred. DVA estimate, seven hundred. For total monthly revenue, nineteen thousand, seven thirty five, eighty cents. Total miles of one thousand eleven, total gas is ninety one gallons.
Any questions? I have one question. The business of the little, the lots of the purpose, how do we address them there? They think those slightly worse.
No, just like the other businesses in town, I'm like, I'm not working on. But you know, you see the amount of building permits I have, I'm not in the office. COVID portion, I honestly guess five thousand.
Is he cited with any someone's work?
No, not yet. You know, we came out of COVID, so most people, most businesses, I make fear someone's illegally because of the revenue problems and getting stuff done. So I didn't want to hit these businesses that were coming out of COVID that weren't making any money with any type of undue burden and spending any money that they didn't have. We just want our businesses to thrive and not really come down on the hard in this instance, in this situation, okay? We're just coming out of COVID, most of these businesses are starting to break.
I understand that, but I'm trying to figure out what kind of businesses lives he's got there. An old candidate, yeah, yeah. It's like, I don't know, selling it and he's got an insurance company. He has the towing and the rentals for the.
Yeah, most like mechanical.
You know, Tom, it's like when you come in, it's bad enough. When you come in, you see on the right hand side, which is in high land, it's a little disturbing. Then you see, the next thing you see is that it's.
Right, there's plenty. So like, I guess people, what you can do is sit down and talk in the next one day and try to get me a full time assistant. Just like to thank the board for getting together with the DOT. I'm glad the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago sparked that to give us the safety procedures and measures that we need to that part. I'm glad the conversation brought out things that weren't known by the town board. And now we've addressed those. So now we've got a safe situation that's going to happen at the town park. So I appreciate that guys are doing that. On another note, you had mentioned John Billman. John and I talked privately coming down near the dockland. And we're discussing on getting money. Maybe the sheriff's supposed to come down and come down here and work on that. So we're working on money there. And I'm working, Mohammed Seem will be a federal success. We're funding the town and getting two, two payments of seventeen million. And I got my wish list in for Marko. So we're working on getting money down there in the federal SASS department. Thirty four million.
Yeah.
Two seventeen million dollars.
Thank you.
Chief. Activity summary for the month of June twenty twenty one. Personal real accidents, three fatal zero property damage accidents, fourteen for total seventeen for the month. Vehicle traffic tickets issued seventy four with one parking license. Total lottery entries, one thousand three hundred and ninety with a total of seventeen arrests for the month. Telephone calls handled, one thousand eight hundred eighty nine. Overtime for the month, dispatch is eight hours, parking is back for sixteen hours. Police mileage, ten thousand two hundred and seventy nine miles with a fuel consumption of one thousand ninety eight point seven six six gallons. Let the board know that we did receive our twenty twenty two VNY allocation off our grant, twenty five hundred, which is about half of what we've gotten. Well, it's half of what we got last year. Last year they took half back. So it's the same at the end of the last year. But it's down from the previous year. So we usually get that five grand, one year we got nine. And it's steadily increasing over the last several years. Last year we got five grand, a bunch of all kinds of budget cuts and issues. They took half back after awarding. And then this year it's twenty five hundred. We get that from the state. We get that from the state. Lots of reasons for this year, productions, they tried to spread out for all agencies of the town. And Bob has said that we have a very active agency. And we do very well with the numbers versus county Y. We do quite a bit of VWI activity in the town. Lot of brewing or solid approval in town for Newburgh, Pipsy, Deloitte and vice versa in the back. So the midnight's been very busy with VWIs. Travis Merrick is one of our midnight guys, time for college and other. They both do very, very good at the order night of VWI problem. Thank you to them. That's what we got as well as we did. We fared much better than Howard receiving the cap. That's all I have. One other thing I want to say. So over the last two or three weeks, we've been having a terrible problem of a local group of young men and women that have been going around specifically the village of Milton and checking door car handles and entering vehicles and taking property out. And in doing so, they find a car and they just take the whole car. As of today, we had a total of six. We recovered all of them within twenty four hours. Free arrests out of the six. It's the same people doing it over and over. Today we did another arrest on it. We also found a car today, maybe the Howard in the church parking lot that was stolen out of City Newburgh. They came up and retrieved their car and we're processing. So we do definitely have a problem in town. We are aware of who's doing it. We are working actively to thwart it. Unfortunately, I know it's a broken record. They get arrested and given a appearance, they come back to court. There's no bail, there's no jail. Arrest them today, tomorrow, there's still no car. That's the way it's been. So I can only encourage people to lock their cars, keep the keys out of them. And hopefully they can't get into car keys. Every, that, that car that had discovered was City Newburgh car. It was reported stolen out of City. Okay, so somebody stole that at City Newburgh and Jersey never records on it. And the last registered owner resides in the home. And somebody put that car, they put a wrapper. Is it possible that the last owner was living nearby the church parking lot? The last registered owner does live in that area. They're working out tonight. So as far as I understand, the last registered owner, I'm not sure if actually still owns the car and or they were the recording people that we saw. Where it was found, what it might have been.
There, the new battery one one. Is there, so say you're the same guy from your three times on a road. We're the same. So what, any point to say in deep?
So yes, so if there's, if there's pending charges in a criminal court and you commit another crime, the judge has an option to settle it. Here's the product. The three arrests we made for the largest police cars haven't appeared in court. All down here. So, so there's no, there's nothing pending right now because they haven't been arraigned because they haven't appeared in court. So they get arrested, they get a ticket, come back to court two, three weeks from now. If they don't change the court date, either on the court side or the defendant's side, they'll be in court two or three weeks. And then anything after that, it matters as an actual court proceeding. They are there. A lot of the judges, we haven't approached that yet here. I'm not sure what our budget is going to do. But a lot of judges are still taking the, the avenue that it doesn't matter they have pending court action, I'm not setting that. But they do have the option to deal with it. It, it, there's a lot of, it's all new. And a lot of the judges aren't wary about the court proceedings themselves and what, and what it could bring if they set bail when they weren't supposed to. So they, they, they err on the side of culture and opt not to settle it.
Chief, with respect in these. Chief, uh, with, uh, we expect in these same individual committees, uh, for the windshield of, of our, uh, our council's vehicle, our insurance.
Yeah. Did we arrest that individual, was that a person?
Yeah, I think the same in...
Yes, yes. Yeah, same, there's a group of, uh, young men, women, that, you know, uh, who have been giving us a hard time recently. Uh, we arrested three of the six. Each of them involved in stolen car. Uh, one of them is involved in five or six stolen cars. Um, and that's a, uh, they didn't, for a regular purpose or so. Uh, there's really not a lot more that we can do other than keep arresting for the crimes that we catch and commit. For now.
Can I ask you, I don't know, can I ask you, are they, they can't be in the car, they can't be in the car?
So, so, predominantly, they're breaking into cars, who's changing, uh, anything they, they, they can sell, uh, anything they can do. When they find the keys, they joyride it. We found all cars that were stolen from town, in town. With the exception of the one we found.
They find the keys and drive it. They just take them off, but they don't do anything with it, joyride it.
Well, two, two of the cars they wrecked, they had access. Um, one of them turned by the line, they actually had access to both the cars. Uh, the other cars, we just found in various locations. One down at the train station, one at the town park, one they took from the lady's house, drove around online for the background, get the spot around. In her, in her phone, but not that. So, they're, they're joyriding, whatever. Two of them, one of the arrests were actively in the car when we bought them. We stopped the car, a traffic violation, not knowing it was stolen. Um, found the players and the officer said, this doesn't seem like, contacted the metro with the car. Who told us that the car was sitting in the driveway. Well, the whole was out of the top of the, the whole part of my dub. Uh, so, uh, the owners don't even know that the car is on, so the next day, they're not, they're not seeing it fly out. Uh, one car that we got was the defendant's unit. There were people home that were... Didn't, uh, achieve this, but, yeah. They were there, all, all of them. So, man, that's, that's everywhere I have, we changed the water, the water, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, some, uh, uh, the rock, all, all of them rocks. So, the board has asked you to, uh, cameras for that and for also for probably the, 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 the playground. So a little over two weeks ago, they discovered a broken sink in the back of the lawn. They, uh, around that same time, they also had damage to the bocce court and retaining wall that runs behind the bocce court. Uh, this individual literally ripped the rocks out of the wall. Thank you to the bocce court for that. Uh, and then we, uh, next week, we had damage to the town highway truck that's assigned to the park, that's usually parked by the front garage, by the playground. Uh, we seen individuals dump the car into the parking lot, attempted to hotwire that pickup truck, he's more, uh, they couldn't, got frustrated, showed them some actual... And that guy's been arrested, they've been caught here, and it's all good, that's the subject of the stamp. So with that, um, I was already in progress of trying to get estimates to upgrade the camera system in the police department as well as move our intercom door bus system from the front door of the police station to the exterior doors of the lot. Uh, so I called the companies back and asked them to do the estimates for the camera system at the pavilion and the camera system at the forward garage near the playground. Um, I emailed you guys, three companies, uh, and their estimates. And then late tonight, I emailed you a fourth company, and they're... Some are pretty expensive, some are horrible, but either way, they're all pretty expensive, some are really expensive. Yeah, uh, there's really no difference, they're all essentially the same thing. So we review those and decide what you want to do. We do have the ability to change our views with the cameras we want installed. We can reduce the number of cameras, we can increase the number of cameras. Of course, that all reflects the pricing. Uh, changing our views will not change the pricing. We can want to look at something other than what I thought we should look at. We can, uh, just remove device on the pavilion. We will have two cameras that look at the bocce court, two cameras that look at the pavilion, one camera that's attached to the pavilion, watch the bathrooms, and two show torches, and a camera on the telephone pole that'll watch part of the town and the stage. Uh, I've opted to look at one of these cameras, not inside, it's not with the... So, I think that the next board meeting wants to board digest of the, uh, the estimates that we see in the, the, the workshop, it's, it's... The other camera systems, just to elaborate, wherever on the platform's used, would be at the front garage. Um, there'd be, uh, camera each side of the, so one look at the basketball courts, two to look at, um, the, the, the playground equipment, the little park. That is would be on the telephone pole that's mounted or on the side of the red body entrance. Uh, one will look at the casino, uh, and you could, and one would be, you have to look at the bathroom, that side of that building. Uh, one will look at the main entrance where it splits off. When you're first coming in, it goes one way, it goes the other, one will look there. Uh, both those systems, the pavilion and the front garage would be, uh, would not be able to, oh, there's no guarantee service of it.
We need to get cable.
Just fine. We, right, we would have to get cable. I know, uh, Congressman Corcoran said something, that's wrong, right? Pastor Corcoran said something about visiting and, and etc., but I know I haven't seen him on the counter and no further conversation about it. But that is something we can visit. The last time I think, if my memory serves me right, it was like ten thousand dollars, you can't raise your hand to run a cable in there. So that would be good.
Yeah, guys, just make sure to speak to the microphone, get feedback in here on the other end.
Well, Jerry, I have a question with the folks. They look at the three, for, the first one was, was the first one I ever looked at was this, because there was also because there wasn't any other technology, basically all this...
Correct. Different brands, uh, one was over the high, and one was... Ooh, yeah, uh, other than that, pretty much all the same stuff. Some were using four K cameras, some were using eight K cameras, depending on the inside, outside. Uh, but they're all generically the same. Uh, some of the companies, private, which America has put in, not China, but there's no, it won't be able to act in this, gather from China itself, it'd be a body to that experience or whatever, but they're all explaining the name, the local location, that's exactly what I wanted. One company came up with a bridgeable system, uh, that I'm not so sure. I can, but basically, cameras at the front garage of the playground, the wires need to be bridged to the pavilion where the DVR recording. I'm not sure that's going to work. He says, look, the other company says, well, or they have three companies saying, well, the, the system that, that's how they estimate. So, we, there's, there's, the, the, the bridge, that we have four, five, six, four, bridge, that bridge, uh, that's the question I asked, I'm not sure, it's, it's wrong. I could ask, ask that question, see if there's... So, when you look at those estimates, there's quite a number, I think, of old scale of different system. Just remember that there's estimates for the police departments, for our access, and then for our system. Then there's one for the garage in the front, that's all. And, and get it out there somehow, then we'll have a more, you know, there. And, well, then, when it is to occur, we'll at least have the ability to go to the garage, or go to the, and pull the video. Hopefully, that's all.
Okay, so, uh, basically, if anybody has any questions, that could be all.
Chief.
Sure. And then, uh, workshop, two weeks from now, we have a schedule, yeah.
All right, I'll just, do you guys have any, actually, please, maybe we should ask important... Yeah, yeah, a lot of you, we have a train station. We do have a lot of you in there, and a train station, if you had idea, we're at a progress, a fear of that. But, yeah, yeah. Absolutely, I'm worried about, no, I see...
Yeah, that could come up there, there is...
I don't, if, 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 the first views that we want, if, the only, the only issue, uh, we can talk about, it's distance from the train station, that's, that could be the problem that we have. And we don't know those folks. At Town Park, we all, we all lose custody of, we all, so we can actually, we don't have, it's a custody, we have the permission, and then they use it. Usually, not literally, but down there, we'll see what we can mount to. We still have the possibility of seeking dangers. All, still apply, and on to that, and on to the product. We have options, we have to do that. We'll look at news for balance and go with that.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for helping, Eric.
A lot of work, thank you very much, Chief.
John, why, sir? Yeah. What's your, one, uh? I'm tired.
So, my monthly report for June twenty-twenty-one, roads. Expect beginning of the month, parent roads that are scheduled to be picked. In preparation, we replaced driveway pipes, mean, drainage pitches, and made blacktop appears in all the roads with a super. On six twenty-two, we start paving with town handling, which is, we pay thirty-eight first, Opos Road, Rosa Ridge Road, Lions Lane, Mulberry, and section of Old England. And, uh, nine eleven, Chestnut Lane, due to the weather and scheduling, we plan to to pave gathering, both, and Riverdole in July, but we did that this weekend. We, there, sadly. So, Jerry, uh, we replaced the driveway pipe on Reservoir Road. On six ten, we ditched along Iowa on six fifteen and six sixteen. We installed four catch bases and two hundred and fifty feet of pipe on Sands Avenue. That's some people had a huge problem. And six, seven, six eighteen, installed the catch base and a hundred thirty feet of fifteen inch pipe on that side of the... Uh, we had, that's, uh... So, thank, it's worth it, so, just there. Um, freshen weeds, we continue going, modeling, while we also moved a landfill, reservoir, and a water tank on Walnut Lane. We cleared all the fresh, we, the roads on, six, eight, and six nine. We had to clear the roadway from the, the breeze due to a severe hush. Town parks on six nine, six ten, we worked at the Sands Avenue part, installing with the water department, new hire. On six thirty, we installed more sprinklers, water department. On six one, we assisted the water department with the boarding break at the intersection of Lions Lane, Creek Road. Our shared services on six one through six seven, we sent trucks to the town avoid to assist with the paving projects. And on six twenty-five, we were asked to supply four trucks to join in with the model center school twenty-twenty-one, which is celebrating. Your, this is, uh, three hundred and sixteen gallons of, yes, diesel, a thousand two hundred.
Thank you, John, and I want to personally thank you for the, uh, work these guys are doing at Sands Avenue. It's remarkable to see the transformation toward it was and was now. So, I guess we can expect all this strength, but I think, uh, eventually, things will work out. I'll have to go aside, the one thing that there's a lot of grassroots, so we make that, that a whole, that's a good thing.
I think people will talk, and there are a few others, and everything. Just damage has gone out, so that the rest, um, will resume. That's, the best time running out, there's more to lose than, you know. So, it's a work in progress, this, I mean, the journey has worked. A lot of, I mean, all too less than, uh, like, you know, blacktop, they, it's, 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 uh, uh...
They've been actually, uh, through a motion, approved, uh, uh, three, one of the three courts, we got the reglette court. So it makes sense, like, the reglette court has to be down first and then, with the flat time. So, uh, we, uh, the next meeting, we'll award the, the, uh, but, I think, same.
I'm told, uh, it was pretty big, it's, it's, so, it's, it's...
Right. Okay, and, uh, and you for all your efforts, so, and, uh...
What do you have, John? Nice to see you. Our monthly report for June, our work in twenty, total seventeen point four million gallons, which is a billion, two double, five hundred eighty thousand gallons. Compared to last month, our usage was seventeen oh five, seven million gallons, which is a daily use of five hundred fifty point two two five. Also, uh, compared to a year ago, our consumption was seventeen point one million gallons for the month, which is a use of five hundred seventy-one thousand. Summing for the month, hydrants, we had to repair and rebuild hydrants at two twenty North Road. We also tested thirty hydrants in Marlborough and Milton for pressure, air flow, for ISO certification. Service lines, we have repaired service line on Creek Road, curb boxes. We have repaired curb boxes on Creek Road, Orange Street, and Sands Avenue. Waterings, we, we had repaired public watering at corner of Creek Road and Lions Lane. We also repaired water being road guts with the help of the highway department. The town park, we had a repair, bathroom center at the park. We also had to repair the sewer pump with the pavilion. At the door park, uh, we installed, uh, a drain for the fountain, we also installed a fountain at the park. We also had, uh, installed another, hydrant, the order hydrant. And we helped install a, a dry well with a drainage, also the down for the highway department. Service line, we have one, frozen five, marked out, we have third. Down to the gas unit, we have four hundred and ten, mileage for the month was three hundred.
Charlie, I, uh, I want to thank you for replacing the station in the men's room, that was, uh, destroyed. Also, thank you, your department, for, uh, installing the, uh, fountain at the door park. Really appreciate that, that's a lot of work. I'd like to put a shout-out to my son-in-law, who helped me do the, uh, concrete work. And, uh, yeah, all, all those great effort, and, uh, that she really appreciates. And, and, uh, uh, right, for the, still, so, it turned out really well, a lot of people, well.
Because, uh, long time.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie, appreciate it. And a follow-up, Mr. Spat?
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Charlie. You can talk back there.
Town park, number four, for June twenty-twenty-one. Perimeter one, for a hundred and thirty dollars, contribution eight, for thirteen thousand twenty-two cents. Buses, it's twenty-one, our total of one hundred and forty dollars. Water services, one, for fifteen hundred dollars. Uncharged, twenty-four, for one thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars, match rate, six-six-five. Fire fees, seven fifty. Building party fees, one, for eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents. Fire fees, one, for twenty-two dollars. Amphibies, forty-six, for fifteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Asset points, twelve, for sixty-five dollars. Certified copies, six, for hundred and ninety dollars. Boiler price, one, for two dollars. Hyatt rentals, one, for a hundred and twelve fifty. Minor says, two, for two hundred dollars. Minor says two for two hundred dollars. Park fees five for less than five dollars. For grant total of forty grand for two hundred and seventy six thousand and ninety two cents.
How are you this much? Maybe.
Uh, I just did a for a second. Uh, usually you draw cars at the same price, so it's a good idea. But the bunch cards are outstanding.
Can we start with the?
It's it's got, this is the first time.
That's right.
So yeah, it's a check off. So, um, yeah. And that's a company's management. So it's nice to see.
You're welcome. Okay, here we go. Uh, water on the next. July. Twenty twenty one, the one to twenty twenty one, the water treatment plant. Plants comply with all speed requirements upon water. So this six of all plants. Model WWTP, they have the average flow of ninety thousand gallons per day. About fifty three percent of the design capacity, average field even level ninety eight percent. Average spending sum removal ninety seven percent. And Milton average daily flow of thirty thousand gallons per day. About fifty five percent of design capacity. Uh, average field even level ninety nine percent, average spending sum removal ninety nine percent. Uh, as usual, both state and local water treatment plants. Operating normally during the month of July without any major changes or events. We have started replacing the panels on the normal greenhouse roof. We are about seventy five percent down. This should finish sometime in the next few weeks. Overall, both wastewater treatment plants are in good working order, but are getting older. If you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Stay safe and we hope we thank you, Julie, Al, and the board. Okay, and the next up is. Yeah. Yes.
Month reports, June first, twenty one, twenty twenty three. When we receive a total of forty calls, all the police force, church, town, mall, the police, New York City Police, Master County Sheriff. Spun by that, thanks to more base, that was the power. Apparently, three of these, uh, basically plays. United States of Congress, one, no, first one. There's one more.
And you have, uh, anyone with any assessment?
Building a town board with the order. What assessment review finished up the operation in two. Follow out one assessment role. One, we have a market.
Uh, yes. Then, then all the plan board, June, June twenty one. When anything worth, uh, in twenty twenty one, at fifty three, six hundred dollars. S four three, six thousand eight hundred forty seven health. Says preparation piece not been invoiced, eight thousand seven hundred nine dollars since. Minutes to do with seven, uh, help me zoom. And these, uh, there. Uh, agenda approval of photograph of minutes for five, three, hundred twenty one. Uh, group unanimously. First, on the agenda, Kent Family Farm, two, two, one seventy, North Road, final. Second, then for the amnesty, group, secret, negative, declaration, notice of that. Confirmation non-sigilance. End of group, we have resolution. Second item, Montel and Toretta, James Street, Marvel, final platform. Board unanimously granted approval for the inclusion. Uh, next item on the agenda, per curable site line checklist, on the second line checklist. Rapidants will be prepared for the next move, next deadline, Friday, June eleventh. Excuse me. First. So the minutes were for first, follows of the zoom. Minutes, dependence, agenda. Uh, there being B for submission in ninety five, don't have to read a novel. Excellent, the board open the hearing. There were several issues at heart in front of proposed application. The board adjourned for a period, will collide in eighth, twenty twenty one, after learning notice. The applicant will remain as supported for me to use. Second item on the agenda, Montezetta, when I do, or road, of the law, for sketch platform. After this proposed Latin change in performance, we count expedited process. Figures and is considered a type two action which does not require secret review. The board granted approval unanimously. Your resolution, board of Montezetta, due for special and approval. Discussion with engineer was, uh, the name was, the moment, so. Never actually last name on the call, guys. Nine W openly wrote discussion cycle. Mister Buzz has not seen completed the conceptual cycle and application, which was reviewed by the engineer at times. Uh, issued many, do driver information and setback. Questions regarding lots of women will need clarification. The board will clarify in last term's coming designation. The kind of interview with cycling checklist. Or agree to approve the revised cycling application checklist and it will be available for new application. Special note to town board. Plane board's rule of the new conceptual cycle review, which is required by town, so it requires engineer review. The town engineer has agreed with three hundred dollar initial review for happening. However, under current town code, only the town will have authority to test to be produced. We are therefore requesting the network to allow for a three hundred dollar application fee for conceptual cycle review. Next bad deadline is June twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Next given meeting is Monday, July fifth, twenty twenty one. Expect those submitted for its grant chairman and all.
Thank you, Alan. So we're going to go to a report of the committees, uh, A and Recreation Committee. Uh, we talked about the, uh. Community Friday, uh, anybody else, else have anything about recreation? Okay. So we're going to be, which is the American Human Rights Committee, not to. Cease the CAC. A report. IT Committee. I think, uh, Danny was standing talking to Gary, where you need to switch, I think you. We're pressing that we, uh.
To switch for the.
Yes.
You can actually read it, wrap it, go out to the garage and print out a cradle. And then you can actually get on. The unit that's in the garage is capable of doing that, you gotta buy a car. But it's a bit like a wireless.
And actually, it's a second. Uh, or second where it's a, uh, reverse, yes, switch. At, uh, Mister Brooks, uh, yes, there. Uh, Mountain Train Station Foundation, I believe they're going to need this this week. Uh, uh, for two reasons. One is they're thinking about putting in a, uh, camera to watch the cheap trains go on. And the second is, uh. We have a CFA grant at, we have papers and, uh, they gave a certain percentage, uh. Where those papers, uh, and, uh, right now we're reviewing with the engineer and the gentleman that gave us the code for the papers. Once everything's done, so hopefully we'll get that by, uh, this week. Uh, Milton Land Systems Committee.
Uh, another four of those, please, the progress.
Yes, three, seven. Marvel Hamlet Economic Development Committee, or.
The other thing that I think we mentioned is, Alan. Regarding the trail and the. Model trail, one of these improvements to that. Going to pursue a grant. That, and then there are two other. Still five parts of that, maybe we won't get a new trail on. Ask for at least some use of a smaller parcel, that's just going to be acres. Should be, uh, the Gabby, almost dead, and, uh. Then the line coming, some preservation, line, margin, so something like that.
Got it. So, uh. Scott Max, you know, that big tree for one of the, uh, the trail. And that's what a rare new skill. So I went down there, that's a big tree.
That's the center, I suppose.
Yeah.
Big tree.
It was a huge tree. Got it. The trail is clear now, so if anybody wants to, uh, trail. Me and Marfa, I think we made a report, uh.
Yes, I'm, I put together before I spoke to the Marfa this morning, uh. Sorry, I'll, I'll read here, okay? Okay, uh. First of all, I want to make sure that all this is certified down, uh, understand that it occurs in some instances of the Marfa. Second, uh, right now, they're focusing now on building up their membership. Uh, hoping there was some. Service area in every aspect of their lives, so they're trying to build up their membership in. Third, I mean, I want to make sure what's good is they have a next good meeting for members of July twenty seventh. And it's focused on marketing strategy, they have guest speaker, Josh Brown. The worst of Tulsa County tourism, they'll be speaking about marketing strategies, which is the next big advert. Uh, after that, they have another meeting scheduled for August eighteen, not focused on a boat tour, which we'll compare. That's very timely, this whole, we've done by then. Uh. Uh, next item, they wanted to make sure we can continue to work on upgrading their website, their Facebook page, monetize it. Larger ways of just creating new spotlight, you know, to attract new members who's using on Facebook page. Uh. They would like to work on creating the interactive map, the high school back department that the future member businesses. Uh, so that's something that they'll be working on in the future. Started early discussion with Susan and Bruce. Regarding the creation of a future partners of America, lover orchestration would encourage young members of our community to consider farming, which is a very good idea. They're still pursuing funding for a little sign at the night, uh, W County Town Park side. That will introduce to our license, the Marlboro County, I guess, and we'll take over the site, sign it. Uh, they have goals for this range of thirty thousand. Thirty thou- thirty thousand to thirty seven thousand dollars. They were soon as CFA ran this last year, that, by the way, side of this CFA. That's true, so this is something I personally think is a good idea, and we spoke about this before, so that's something that's. I would like to continue to help them try to achieve. Uh, they, they have received a seven thousand dollar, uh, grant, if you like the better word, from the Senate, and Jacob's office for. Improve farm trail signage and banners, so that's going to improve finally. Uh, they wanted to make sure we just do that, they continue to highlight the even longer providing, by providing brochures of. That it was like a walkway, if you're working for P S, which advertises all the businesses that are going to. And all those are very, sure. Audio, the bar's market continues to be well, and consistently have six to twelve vendors there every week depending on weather and other bigger activities. Lucy, who the head was, twenty farm, Lucas Road, and farm. Eating road bakery, Indian farm, N K House, Sugar Works, Coretta Homes, that farms. And they sold some others, uh, just recently, a blue truck that added to the lineup. Untamed flavor scanner, who is the name of it, by Dimitris Johnson, who's a Marfa resident. And signage regarding, uh, when we go over this, we'll finally display throughout the market.
Thank you, Alan, is, uh, was that put into records? Send that there. I said it's in the stadium. Oh, yeah, I have the, uh, associate committee. All right, well, this is, uh, like I said, town back for the elevation update, uh, we received a hundred thousand. We met with the, the market and the engineer. And, uh. Get that done in August first, and he said they would pass on to us again. Uh. We wanted a district improvement, nothing on that. Uh, just a reminder, time of the meeting to be members is September eighteenth. Uh, remaining is the nineteenth, that was spoke at seven. P M, who a chanting will require. And, uh, staff here update, like Al said, things are moving pretty good there. Very exciting, I can't wait till it's finished, and, uh, and have a good party.
Look what's up. Sure, September fifteenth, remember this, we believe.
That was pretty.
Alright, alright, so two hundred fifty.
Yeah. And I understand that a margin, uh, a little margin would some one eight or. Maybe in both way, actually, yeah. Or one, one, all area of fire. And that would be. And this would be. And you're also going to have to, uh, watch the lake.
Yeah.
They were on the frog.
She's very scared.
What's that?
What is?
So, uh, we invented the agenda to head Saint David Park. On the new business, uh. Thanks to, uh, council management offering, we have three proposals for the electric. And I can say that they opened it in stone with a. So this proposal was ten thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Down there, we had a fortune very close, thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. And another one was twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. So they will fix the multiple and thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Correspondence. Yeah, the motion.
I'm making a motion that would work as a value, just don't let it. I'll say the next guy.
On favor. Oh, let's say. Okay, so I put in all the numbers for the. The American Rescue Land. At first, they said that we were gonna get point nine six. But after we're in formal numbers, we're actually gonna get eight hundred seventy eight thousand seven hundred sixty nine dollars. And then upcoming two weeks' dolos, for one in the summer and. Then another half in the summer of twenty twenty two. As you know, myself and Councilman Koenig has met with. Dennis Flarus down at the Marlboro Sewell Plant, which really needs some. Really help, it was built nineteen seventies, so. So that's where most of that market's been dealt for infrastructure. And that's one of the things that the rest of the fans talks about, infrastructure and broadway. The other thing correspondence is, we had correspondence from Robert Elliott. Congratulations, I see you had made real progress on your work. Wow, this is a big deal, the by coincidence, I'm working on an inventory of the Hudson River Infrastructure Improvement Projects. With the Hudson Valley Infantry Corporation in the Hudson River Historic River Thames. And we have a book showing many pro- projects and those in the planning stage that need funding. Are your project probably funded? Of course they are, so what we did is, we got together, myself, Howard, Ellen from the Historical Society. And Rosemary and Jerry, and we get it on this, and I'll send that to the board, to wish list. For help on new respect, especially with Pierre and San Chad New Project. And other things. So that was very exciting to hear from Bob Ryan. Next thing is, I think we have to time by a motion accept the new gentleman that wants the electrical list. Electrical list and self corporation down in Self Corporation. Is looking for authorized authorization for electrical inspection, count tomorrow. Or set the company's location insurance and resume, and we are satisfied. That will be submitted, we now test the detection information, finally we do access that they be added to our list. Approval of electrical inspection inspectors to the town. So I need a motion and I expect self corporation to work this. Second, on favor, opposed, on the incident, so.
The county, the county's not required, then also.
All electricians will have to be registered with both the county starting January first. Go along with this. Everybody, anybody on our list, in the by my department last year, they do many electrical inspections about going through the country's farm off the list. They are aware that all electric, all electric has to be certified by certified electricians certified by the county, there is also still a waiver for a homeowner who's on electric. But still the underwriter that. But that doesn't start from January first.
What do they do to get certified?
There's a test, and there's certain qualifications needed to, you need to take the test, or to the time. Also, if they have information certifications from the county, they're not allowed to do it. And then you have to construction, and you have, and you'll be waiting for the people to do their own work with the recording electric inspector.
Well, someone, someone live in house, and they, and they go somewhere that's large.
No. As the word, yes, the registered and certified.
The counties have similar.
Yes, even for one of those electric, some of them have plumbers, some of them have framers, it's not bad. I mean, I think it's a lot to catch up with that. My question on legislative end was, will we still bond these electricians at this point or not? Because the bonding, the bond, a certified electrician, you bond a certified firmer, you bond a certified plumber. Is that plumber walks off your job, and bond is full, and you're able to complete the job. And I'm all in favor of that, so you hire an electrician, you hire a plumber, and you run construction, and he walks out on you. He's got a bond posted, and you pull the bond, and you lose the money. I'm in favor of that, you know, if they're not doing that at this point, let's pull up certifications for that one.
That's perfect.
Absolutely, and if you certify in Orange County, you probably carry it, and you're in there. So it's like the Orange County certification, the West County certification are very similar to what we require. And if they've done that, and they took an election for X amount of years, and we certified it, add it to our package of electricians. And basically, if you can get registered every year.
When did this start?
Lower than February of eleven, in January twenty twenty, so it's almost two years. They put it in effect, they put it in effect in January, from twenty twenty, but never had the test certifications, or even anything put in place. It took them two years to get it in place, if I had everything in place, like just give me the test now. And again, it'd be great experience for January first, now to January first, there's the opportunity to get your test papers. We say that.
Thank you. Any, uh, public comment? Yes, thank you. If you may.
You can send us, it's actually a proposed. I'm just curious what the law states, why the arraignments for these people who are getting arrested, why sometimes it might take up to two weeks just to get an arraignment? Can't that happen like within hours or days?
So because everybody's releasing an appearance ticket, it runs off the court calendar, and they only have court every other week for. District Attorney arraignments. So yes, the judge can come in and do an arraignment, but the judge can only release them on an appearance ticket. They can't sit there, so the judge just doesn't come in and do the arraignment, they wait for the court date off the calendar on the appearance ticket to do the arraignment. Right. But yes, like, under a domestic situation, we'll call a judge in to do an arraignment because we need order protection. So the judge will come in and he'll do the arraignment for the purpose of the order protection. And then the defendant's released an appearance ticket to come back in two weeks from that arraignment. In this other situation, where there's nothing the judge can do in terms of the arraignment, other than start that clock. They don't come in and do the arraignment, there's no need for it until he returns on his appearance.
So part of the solution being, if we have court every week, or is that not even a possibility?
Yeah, I don't think they can do that, I don't think they can do that. We do have court every week, every other week, the DA rotates from one judge to the other.
Thank you.
Any more?
Thank you very much.
Anybody else for a?
I'd like to speak.
Hold on one second, I think, I think somebody on Zoom said something, hold on, let me just see if I can figure this out. Uh, James, can you hear us?
I I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, barely, I'll try and repeat what you're saying.
Okay.
Hold on one other second, James.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you know, the planning board's going to have a meeting next week, and I just want to make sure, because it'll be a public hearing. That people who call in will be able to be heard, both by the board and the public there. So I just want to make sure everybody can can hear me as a member of the public.
If we can hear you, fine, I know we do have some audio problems about you hearing us, but we were trying to work those kinks out.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Anybody else want to do?
Two, you, you and Jay.
So, resolution sixty four amended fee schedule, as indicated in the report from Chairman Chris Grant. Fee schedule prepared to, they need mine, and I, I, for hiding to repeat for the conception site plan. Supervise the land center for the fine restoration, second by. Whereas the town, or the town, making fee schedule, which is on time to time, and then. And whereas town, we're intending to amend the fee schedule, prepare in essential deposit for engineering review on its conception site plan. And those section one five five, there's thirty one D. And such an amendment is the type two section action for the whole purposes of C. Now therefore, we resolve that town or air gardens, the fee schedule, where the new line, I am only the heading. Planning for estro deposit as follows, essential site plan, three hundred dollars moved. And we further resolve that amended fee schedule be filed, and I'm heard, and also provided by the Department of the Copy of the Resolution. This is the only resolution, which results as follows. Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's just a question of this, I always hate the E's, but. I would assume this speed would hopefully alleviate some complaint or renewal for the future. Actually, say that one. Down the road with the sentimental engine, you want one, I think this right out of here, something we're talking about.
This is a representative of some of the people. To have, to hear their, you know, the, the language, that expertise. These are very big, they want to get something that they want down the road, so it's been like.
Yeah, it's an extra, so three hundred dollars necessary for speed, right, so a little over three hundred dollars, takes half an hour, three and a half hours. And then they bond the air.
Yes, you could. Resolutions is about that, the other ones are designed to execute a contract with the original vision of one hundred fours. That should provide to the tenant center of the following resolution, with second by council. Whereas the town of Marlboro, Ailvichen Wattington Hall, Inc., are parties that franchise the greater consumer to which gave the vision of Wattington Hall, Inc. Which ranked a non-exclusive franchise construct owned and operated Ailvichen system within the town of Marlboro franchise agreement. And whereas the franchise agreement is out for renewal, and whereas the division of Wattington Hall, Inc. And the town had negotiated the term of the contract to be for renewal of the existing franchise agreement. And whereas the public hearing on the proposed contract itself, on, well, big one, and whereas the proposed contract. And next, here to as scheduled A, now therefore, we resolve that town or food, or supervisor food set. Institute the proposal contract grant, the case of Wattington Hall, in non-essential franchise construct. And structure not to do television system within the town of Marlboro for ten year here. Resolution, which, 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 before we do that, I just wanted to say that we did go through our attorney, we did review this. And it's okay, there's some language that we did change, but we go the three times, so I just want to make sure. Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Very much. This, there's one that we did back in twenty nineteen, resolution sixty six. Application for the W R P grant for development of mannequin mark, supervised allowing the most fine work. Now, the model has finished the this W R P, which was called patient and director's. Record and recreation, whereas the town, seeing one from the local or private foundation program. On the chasing session of the land, it's quite a beautiful function of character of the business. Walking, got walking seven days trail, finished the plant, they get it, and I want to do one of it up all. And whereas the efficient combination from home, so with a wonderful, that's the one I said, the town, we can state. We, town of Marlboro, supports the application for the park.
Husband Margaret.
Yes.
Husband Monica.
Yes.
Husband thinking.
Yes.
Husband thinking.
Yes.
Supervisor, what was that?
Yes, and thank you to our grandfathers, Coach Ray Warren, Jerry Warren, and Howard Baker, once again. Like our third time trying this one, hopefully, the last time we had the points for the W R P, who had the points for the W R P, which came, which. And the last time is fifteen, so I can get a motion.
Second.
On favor. Thank you very much, John.